The regular meeting of the Putnam County School Board on Tuesday, May 24th, 2020, is now in session. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Bud McGuinness and the invocation by Mr. Daniel Helms from the Branch Community Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys, just join me. Lord, I am so grateful to be a part of this community, and in many ways, I'm the byproduct of this school system. And so I pray for this institution that has the amazing responsibility of caring for and educating the kids and really the whole, all the families here in this county, Lord. And so I pray that you would guide them in this meeting. I pray that you would direct them. I pray, Lord, that you would give them wisdom and discernment, Lord, and whatever is good and right and true and best for our city and our whole county, you would lead them in that direction, Lord. And it is in your name, Jesus Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
We will begin with our presentations. The first presentation is the Sunshine State Scholar Award by Mr. Joe Theobald. And while he's coming up, if you would like to, because it is kind of crowded in here after your group is recognized, you can exit either this way, the way you came in, or you can go through the back that goes straight to the parking lot, or you're welcome to stay for the meeting. Okay, Mr. Theobald?
Oh, well, thank you. It is a celebratory time of year, as we can tell here in the room. And out at QI Roberts, we've got quite a bit to celebrate. So I wanted to invite Deasia Evans to come on up to the front. Deasia, if you could just come up while we talk about her. Yeah, we clap for her. Deasia was selected to represent Putnam County as our Sunshine State Scholar. Now, to do this, she has to carry a 3.9 or higher GPA. She has to have at least 25 volunteer hours, and she has to be on path to get the Florida Bright Future Scholarship, all of which she has done and exceeded. She has over 100 volunteer hours this, excuse me, in her high school career. And she has a plan to stay in the medical field, and when Deasia puts her mind to something, she is going to achieve it. So I would look forward to meeting with Dr. Evans eventually after she's done with medical school. So congratulations to Deasia. And that is the other Dr. Evans clapping there. Thank you and congratulations, Deasia. We appreciate you coming. And I have another presentation of a Presidential Scholar.
Get a photo?
Yes, please.
Okay. Paul, can you sit?
I do not want to be in that photo.
Forgot your suit.
I did forget my suit. Actually, there's a reason I have this shirt on.
Okay, alright.
We can use some more.
Yep, I just want to make sure. Alright, so there are about 3.1 million high school graduates this year throughout the country, and only 5,000 of them are invited to be selected as Presidential Scholars. And we have one here in Putnam County, and that student's name is Kendall Asbury. Kendall, if you could come up, please. Kendall was chosen amongst all the other scholars in the country for the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. It's one of the highest honors bestowed on a graduating high school senior. It dates back from 1964 by order of the President to recognize our best and our brightest, and Kendall certainly is one of those. And we at QI Roberts are extremely proud of what she's accomplished already, and we look forward to what she will accomplish in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, Kendall Asbury.
Kendall gets it honest. Her mother was a wonderful student.
Actually, it was last night we recognized her too, because at the banquet for her GPA at the spring sports banquet.
So that was, that was another student. I think you're remembering Natalie from Interlock until last night. But yes, we recognized Kendall last week at the Top Scholars. Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
They run in. Yeah. You've been to so many.
You can't, you can't miss her mother, because they look like clones.
And though it's not on the agenda, I would like to say, the reason I am wearing this shirt is because I'm representing our esports team at QI Roberts. This is our first year participating in esports, which is electronic gaming. And we just greatly appreciate your support, the support of the school district, specifically Director of IT, Lynn Harvey, who's done a great deal to support our teams. And our team was ranked number six in the nation, and we made it all the way to the quarterfinals of the national tournament. And that was after playing for three months. So we have bright things in our future, including our esports team. So that's what I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our Crime Stoppers Award by State Attorney RJ Larissa. And Ms. Janet Young, no, and assistants.
I'll be happy to introduce the folks that we got with us here today. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, and thank you all so much for giving the State Attorney's Office and myself the opportunity to be here today. I gotta tell you, you know, as State Attorney, it's nice to be passing out checks instead of subpoenas or something that folks aren't too happy about getting. And I'd like to introduce for you, this is Allison Lentz. She is the Executive Director of Crime Stoppers. We have Tina Kelly, our Lead Secretary with the Putnam County Office. And we have Haley Harrison, who is our Media Specialist and PIO, that's going to be taking some pictures to post on Facebook later on for this. I'd also like to announce, before we recognize the students for first, second, and third place on the elementary, middle school, and high school level, that next year, we are increasing the monetary amount for the awards. Now, I don't, is it beneficial now, Allison?
The amounts aren't official, but we are definitely going to increase them. Probably in the next month, we'll have.
We're going to, and we're going to make it, hopefully, a little bit more attractive for students to participate. Not that they're in it for the money, but I'm sure that it is a nice thing to get when you're recognized for your talent. So this is Crime Stoppers, folks. The State Attorney's Office sponsors this. Our theme for the posters for the kids is "See It, Say It, Stop It." And I don't think we could have a more appropriate theme, because we all know, in the challenging times that we are in, that anything we can do to prevent folks from making bad decisions and also prevent folks from being hurt is important. I'd much rather prevent crime than have to prosecute it. And this poster contest, I believe, is one way that we're trying to reach kids in the community. So thank you, kids, for participating. Thank you so much. Thank you, parents, for encouraging your kids, and thank you Superintendent, School Board, and the teachers that make this happen. So without further ado, we're going to start with elementary school, and we're going to start with the third-place winner from Aquila Elementary School, 4th grade, Emma Wolf. Emma, you here?
Come on over here. We want to get a picture taken. And if you was taking certificates, what we want you to do is stand over here and display your posters so everybody can see, and we'll get a picture when we get all of them. This is the actual posters, folks. If you can see them, they are quite extraordinary.
Second place, 4th grade from Jenkins Elementary, is Lamone Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins.
Here is your check.
And our first prize winner, elementary school, 4th grade from Jenkins Elementary, is Lily Abad. Lily? And I noticed that Sheriff Gator Deloach is here. Sheriff, how about you come on up here and celebrate this poster contest with us? The Sheriff's Office also sponsors this financially, and we truly appreciate Sheriff Deloach and his crew for helping them. So thank you, Sheriff. Oh, you want to get Sheriff, get a picture? Just, okay. Okay.
Alright, sir.
Here, let's hear it. In that sun.
Butter, any tissues down there? I need to clean my glasses. I think I see a box by Charlie, but we'll wait.
I promise you, I'll give it back. Okay. Do you want him to stay or for the rest, or just have him sit?
We can sit and have him sit and then bring him back up later if we need to.
Now, we go to the middle school level. Third place from Interlock and Junior High School, 8th grade, Danny Sledge. Danny?
Congratulations, and thank you for participating.
Congratulations.
I thought I had.
Okay. Second place, middle school, QI Roberts, Charles Romfle. Charles? Alright. And first place, middle school, 7th grade from Interlock and Junior Senior, is Sarah Austin. Sarah. Congratulations, and thank you for participating. Okay, we want to get a photo again? Alright. Let's get this so they can see it in the.
That sheriff has broken some cameras before. I'm sure y'all enjoy this a lot better than what y'all do missing time.
You get them off? Get them? Okay.
I can't believe you got a stabbing down there.
And now we'll go on the high school level. 7th grade, 3rd place.
It's more.
From Interlock and Junior Senior High School, Rose High. Okay. Second place on the high school level from Finial Baptist Academy, 10th grade, Crystal Lynn Lester. Alright. We want to get your picture here just a minute. And high school, 1st place, 10th grade from Finial Baptist Academy, is Kylie Stetcher. Okay, we'll come up here and get the picture. Okay, alright. Folks, I just want to say again how much I appreciate being a part of this. Thank you for supporting it. I truly think it's, I truly think it makes a difference. And we hope now that COVID is somewhat in our rearview there that we'll even get more participation. And again, thank you for your partnership and your support.
RJ, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it, you and the sheriff both. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is the Chief Science Officers, Lorena Dominey.
There she is.
Hi. How are you?
Good. Just switch your slides, you just got to press here.
Okay. Alright. Good afternoon, board members, students, and families. My name is Lorena Dominey. I am the District STEM Resource Teacher. And today, I would like to recognize some students from Browning Pierce Elementary School and QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School. These students were part of our Chief Science Officers Program, and they have advocated and promoted STEM in their communities and their schools. What the Chief Science Officers Program does, I mean, includes our students in 6th through 12th grade. They serve as STEM ambassadors for their school, and they have a student voice in what they want to learn in STEM. So they come up with innovative ideas, and they share that with their school. And I want to thank Dr. Serency and the Board for being big advocates for us in STEM in this county. It's huge in this county. Here are some projects that some of the other schools who are not here today have completed this year. Every single elementary and junior/senior high school has done a project, and they were quite innovative and very, the students were very excited, and they were all kinds of things. So we have STEM Night, we have Mosley teaching 2nd graders how to code, we have Middleton Burning teaching 1st graders how to sort through STEM activities. We have a STEM Club that was created, we had STEM Night with a planetarium at other Kelly Smith did STEM with kindergarteners. Browning Pierce, who is one of our schools, will be presenting their project, so I won't talk about that. We had Crescent City Junior/Senior High School have a whole STEM Week where they promoted STEM. We have QI Roberts, and they had about eight projects going on. So they are here today to present as well, and you could see their projects there. They had a lot. So the first to present will be Maya Lark and Preston Fields from Browning Pierce Elementary School. And then next, after them, will be Sophia Jolly and Aiden Stewart from the QI Roberts Junior/Senior High School.
Um, CSO stands for Chief Science Officers. It has given us a lot more opportunities than what we would have if we were just in the normal STEM classes, February, April, and May. And it helps a lot to get us ready for the next step in STEM, especially since we have extra, or an extra core toward activity we're developing. Um, we have spread the word about STEM through our management by saying, by telling STEM girls and STEM staff, also, um, here are some STEM classes I have shared on the learning housements, but my favorite has to be the one, that did you know that 92% of boys and 97% of girls will lose interest in STEM if not in grade 5 through 3? Um, there is a joke I have told, um, long time ago, a photon checked into a hotel and asked if we need help or not. The photon is gone, doesn't touch our life.
They make up everything. It's cute.
Thank you, that was wonderful.
Hello, my name is Sophia Jolly, and I am the elected high school senior chief science officer at QI Roberts. Today, CSO Aiden Stewart and myself have the honor and privilege to make a presentation regarding the Chief Science Officer Program in Putnam County. CSOs are student leaders in science, technology, engineering, and math, also known as STEM. As the FFA is to agriculture, chief science officers are as to STEM. Thanks to the Federal Programs Department and STEM2Hub, we began our program in 2018. We now have the strongest program in the state. CSOs can be from any grade, from grade 6 to grade 12. Teachers are their mentors at every school in the county. Being elected a CSO is just the beginning. CSOs complete trainings to be advocates and leaders of STEM. Each school creates an annual plan to augment curriculum. Exceptional students are invited to higher levels of training and national events. In the first class of Florida CSO trainees, Putnam County represented about half of all students. Cole Smith, Joanna Kite, Aiden Stewart, and myself served as state representatives. Some of us have even been invited to international and national events. Even with COVID, we make attempts to event each of these to further our knowledge and our leadership skills as well. In January 2020, the QIR CSOs traveled with Dr. Rick Serency to Tallahassee to take part in the STEM Day at the Capitol and to brief the state of Florida Chief Science Officer Dr. Frazier. Other STEM accomplishments include the first artificial intelligence program in Florida, as well as FAA-certified drone pilots, as well as FAA private pilot written test certificates, including myself.
Hello, my name, hello, my name is Aiden Stewart, and I'm the elected junior high school's chief science officer, sorry, for QI Roberts. Since the CSO program began, more than $50,000 in STEM items have been acquired or donated to QI Roberts in the last four years. Unfortunately, we don't have data on the rest of the schools. Other STEM activities have included STEM communications and STEM field trips. Drone competitions have brought nine state and national-level trophies to QI Roberts in the last four years. Additionally, the Putnam County Drone Races are in their fourth year. April of last month was particularly rewarding because QI Roberts faced 15 schools that are each five to six times larger. We won three gold medals in the three events. The one we did not win was because we did not enter it. None of this would have been possible without the support and financial assistance of a bunch of organizations. A big thank you to everyone who supports STEM in our community, Sophia, and I will not take any questions you may have.
What is the requirement to be a chief science officer?
Mostly, we, if you want to, you can enter into like an election at your school, and then by popular vote, you can be elected into it. It's kind of.
It's a little bit more, the science, the STEM officers, the science, the math, the engineering, those teachers nominate students. And then from those nominations, the elections take place. So it's not just any student, it's got to be, you got to be kind of top student to be even on the ballot.
I'd say that I'm very proud of our progress in STEM, and Raina, you and Mikey have really done a great job in, you know, expanding that in our district. But just, I don't know if we mentioned this a few meetings ago, but we actually had some delegates from another nation come over and visit and, you know, look into our STEM activities. We had a delegation from Israel come here and view that. So not only are we known here statewide, we're known nationally and internationally for the work we're doing here. So thanks for your guidance, and the CSOs are really keeping this on the forefront of our students. So thank you for your leadership.
And don't hesitate to come back if, if you guys need help. We'll figure something out.
Thank you.
Careful what you offer.
We can only do what we can do, so we'll, we may know people like Miss Gilliard have got a lot of money.
Your checkbook. That's right.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Lamp of Learning Awards, Alpha Delta Kappa, Cherie Clayton.
I just want to say again, great job to Lorena and Mikey. We actually work together in federal programs, and I love trying out the new things that they get in our office before they go out to the schools. But good afternoon, school board members, students, and families. My name is Cherie Clayton. I am the president of Alpha Delta Kappa, which is an honorary international organization for educators. And I have a few of our members here with us today, and we are excited because we are going to present our Lamp of Learning Award. And this is a trend that we started here in Putnam County. We award the top 6th grader at each elementary school with a monetary reward of $50. And of course, they are recognized for their academic and educational accomplishments. These students were chosen by their teachers for being great all-around student leaders, both academically and socially. These students also met the following criteria: excels academically, behaves well in class, exhibits a positive attitude, helps his or her classmates, and participates in school, community, and church activities. So let's go ahead and get started with our recipients.
Alright, the first one is Javien Price. Oh, the School Children's Reading Center Charter School. Alright, the next one is Lily Mae Thomas from James A. Long Elementary School. Alright, next one, Isabella Wingfield from Middleton Bernie Elementary School. Andrew Wallwick from Kelly Smith Elementary School. Next, Ruby McCall from Robert A. Jenkins Junior Elementary School. Next, Melina Bennett from Browning Pierce Elementary School. Ashton Stiegel from Melrose Elementary School. Ty Carson from Aquila Elementary School. Nigel Niebit from Mosley Elementary School. And then Kayshawn Harrison from Putnam Academy of Arts and Science.
Great job, ladies.
So alongside the Lamp of Learning Award, we would also like to offer our $1,000 scholarship that we offer to a high school student. We are excited to announce that Jeremiah Cook from Crescent City Junior Senior High School has been selected as the recipient of that scholarship. Jeremiah is an honor student. He is also a member of Dr. Surancy Superintendent Advisory Council. And he also served as the varsity football team captain, which shows his leadership skills. Jeremiah's father worked as an educator, a coach, and a mentor at Middleton Bernie Elementary and Crescent City High School before his passing in 2020. Jeremiah continues to uphold those roots his father has planted in him and he continues to build his own legacy as well. Congratulations, Jeremiah. Thank you again, school board members.
Thank you, Cherie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and last but certainly not least, our recognition of our state-level competitors by their coaches.
All right. Hey, Coach. How's it going? Good evening. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jeremiah Passmore, the track and field coach for Palaka Junior Senior High School. Today, we're here to recognize our Palaka Junior Senior High School Boys and Girls Track and Field Team State Qualifiers. Palaka Junior Senior High School has been a district champion for the boys for the last three of the last four years. Palaka Junior Senior High Girls were our district runner-ups with only eight team members in 2021. In 2022, Palaka Junior Senior Girls are now our district champions. The only school in Putnam County to hold that title. I would like to first recognize our awesome coaching staff that have made it an awesome season for us. First, our coach, Kedrick Wright. I'm pretty sure everybody knows him. In his absence, Coach Elijah Campbell and also Farshion Pinkston Sr. Our other coaches are our distance coach, Johnny Givens Sr. And our coach of many hats, our hurdles coach and middle school coach, Odell Ford. Now, without further ado, our track and field student athletes. These athletes competed all season to receive the award of the top 18 athletes in the state of Florida in their events. Our individual state qualifiers are Aleah Ford, if you could come up, Aleah? Who qualified in the 300 meter hurdles and finished in the top 16 in the state. Our next is Johnny Givens, I mean Jonathan Givens, who qualified in the 110 hurdles. Finished in the top 10 overall. Our next individual state qualifier is Jayshawn White. Jayshawn White, who qualified also in the 300 hurdles and finished in the top 10 overall. Our next is our girls' 4x100 relay team who finished eighth overall in the state of Florida. Kalia Wright. Who is also the daughter of great Kedrick Wright. Yumira Passmore. That's my child. Jamaya Douglas. And Samaya Edwards. In addition, we also had our boys' 4x400 relay team who placed seventh overall in the state. Jayshawn White. Our senior, Sientre Clark. Our senior, Hayden Newman. And our first eighth grader that could compete in the, in the state competition, Tommy Offord. And last but not least, Torrance Poole. This season, Torrance took fifth overall in the DISCUS and is now Putnam County's first two-time state champion in the shot put, shot put.
While Holly's coming down, coaches, I wanna thank you guys. All you do, you make such a difference with our kids. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Lucky to have good people working with our kids. You're only giving us, you gotta watch him.
That's my nephew.
I know, I know.
That's the next grandson.
He's a lot better looking than Grandpa, yeah.
If Palaka's coming when they see that.
He bet. Great job.
I don't get to burn the boats.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I didn't think about it.
I get one team, one dream, burn the boats.
I coached Jermaine in high school too.
Did you?
Baseball.
Okay, and next we have, well, that's exactly who we have. Tanya and Tad, right?
Good afternoon. I'm Tad Deloach. I'm Interlockin High Weightlifting Coach.
I'm Tanya Troyano. I'm Interlockin High School's Girls Weightlifting Coach.
We did not know we were speaking today. Thanks to Mr. Whitehurst, he just kinda told us, "We need to be here." So we didn't know nothing else. That's gonna be a hard speech to follow from Palaka, but I had three state qual, no, one state qualifier this year. Should've had probably three, but Joseph Jones went for a 154 class. He did real well in the bench, had a little bit of trouble with the clean and jerk. Judging was real tough out there. But I think if he would've worked that a little bit harder this year, he would've been a lot better. But things come in life and he has to do what he has to do for work and stuff like that, understandable. But he did a good run this year. Real proud of him.
I had two state qualifiers this year. One is not here. That's Michaela Golden. But tonight I have Marissa McGibben. This year, she placed sixth at state with a bench of 210 and a clean and jerk of 165 pounds. And she holds the record for our school, undoubtedly. So, yeah, she did an awesome job this year. Thank you, baby.
Well, you gotta know, Mr. Whitehurst will do this to you.
Uh, yeah.
You gotta, you gotta watch him. Excellent job.
I didn't quite make my steps this morning, so I think I've.
You got it now.
I'm a little closer now. We have, we're finished with presentations. We now are to our public comment section. And we have two public comments. The first one is Ms. Kathy Campbell. Hello, if you'd just state your address.
My address? 104 River Oak Court, East Palatka, Florida, 32131. Hello, I'm Kathy Campbell and I'm retired teacher of 33 years from Putnam County and having grown up here and gone to school here. I've come today to ask the school board to re-put Good Friday back on the calendar. The reason I ask is that there seems to be no apparent reason why it was taken off. I have the three, I have three calendars. One that was approved by the board on February the 15th, which leaves Good Friday, which we know, we all know what that day means. And it was approved by the board. Then there were some things, I guess, that were revised and it was approved by the board again on April the 5th, again recognizing Good Friday as a holiday. But then something transpired and it was taken off on a calendar at another time. Evidently, I don't know, there was a meeting, but it was acknowledged that it was the approval date of April the 5th. So there's two conflicting calendars. But my, my simple request is today is that you would put that back on the Friday. It's been on there for decades, I'm sure, as long as I was a young girl here. If you would put that back on the calendar, for I see no reason for it should've been taken off. I also thought that if that's the case, I thought, you know, why not use a tool that they have in the English language? It's simply a comma. Clay County School Boards uses it to separate Good Friday, comma, student holiday, teacher holiday. A comma in the English language, Webster Dictionary, used especially as a mark of separation within a sentence. And I think that's what the goal is, is to separate. That's the mindset. So I ask simply, school board members, since you did approve it on April 5th, you have Good Friday. And I don't understand how all of a sudden it disappeared on another calendar that's also dated April 5th, which at least wanted to think, okay, at least wanted to suspect what, what happened, what was done. It seems untruthful, to be honest. And many people have talked to, many people have called me and they said, "Well, what happened?" You know, was there something done? It just gives that appearance, which I know that it's not your intent at all to give an appearance of something done in darkness or behind the scenes, and that's what it looks like. So I am simply here to request that you put it back on. And I know the comment is about Christmas and all of that. And I think a lot of us went along with that because Christmas is a day within a period of 14 days, sometimes 15 days. So I think at that time, that's how we looked at it. Like, I can see winter break because Christmas is in there and it's on different days of the week. And I believe that's why that, because I've heard that is the reason. And then people say, "Well, we just don't wanna have trouble." So you're saying remove the, remove that Christian religious holiday so you avoid trouble. But yet, we sat here and had a pastor pray. It doesn't line up. And so I simply ask that you revisit it and please put Good Friday, comma, back on the calendar.
Superintendent, would you like to respond at all?
Yeah, I've asked Ms. Whitehurst, who is on the calendar committee, Ms. Whitehurst, could you come up and just?
Yes, we spoke. I spoke with her.
I just want her to respond.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. The, the board approves the days that we take off the, the actual calendar as far as what days we're gonna start, what days we're gonna finish, when each one of our nine weeks are gonna happen and, and when our holidays are taking place. And that has been approved. There's not any change to any of that. This was a technical change of wording. That is why it has not been board-approved. It's been just revised with that, taking that wording off and using student-employee holiday. So it did not have to be board-approved again because it was not changing anything within the actual calendar of approval. It was the description of one of the days.
Can I respond? My response would be after being on a calendar committee in the past, I know that these days and titles are discussed for months ahead. So in my opinion, after being on a committee, this would've already been discussed with, within the committee. So for it to have gone to you guys twice and been approved, then there was an epiphany? I mean, that's just how it appears to so many people that talk to me. That all of a sudden now we're just gonna strike those two little words off after the board approved it? That is how it appears. And I don't believe that was your intention, but that is how it looks.
Kathy, while you're here, I'll just make a few comments. You know, having dealt with this for. I, I went through training at Vanderbilt University years ago to try to figure out how to do certain things that you can do in school, like allow students to live, prayer and things like that, just to protect their, what they can and can't do. And I know everybody up here feels strongly about, you know, many things that we no longer have the luxury of being able to do without some type of repercussion coming. And I hate to say that, but that's, we're in an environment to where you can't do everything that you would probably like to do. And we have to ensure that we follow within rational limits what we can and can't do. I, I know that I had the same comment and I spoke with Ms. Whitehurst and I received an answer that I felt like was probably what I was going to hear and that we were one of the few districts left in the state that probably still kept that terminology in. And we're in a climate right now to where I, I see the city of Palaka's been under attack from a group about possibly using money to work on a pool in a facility. And different things that we see, we've got a little bit of assault on government being involved in anything. Now, the terminology of, of the use of the word "God," "In God We Trust," "One Nation Under God," that's been repeatedly determined in the Supreme Court to be secular in nature and not proselytizing. So you have to, we, we have to follow our board attorneys and, and, and follow the advice that we receive. And, and it's, and it doesn't always make me feel good. You know me well enough to know that, and I know my fellow board members where their hearts are, but we have to try to carry on and do what we can to the best of our ability.
I still would request.
No, I was just, since you, I know we have a lengthy board meeting, but yes, Mrs. Whitehurst did call each of us individually. And my comment to her, straight up when she brought it up to me, was, "They can't take it out my heart what I called."
Of course.
That's exactly your conversation and mine. But then you said something else that struck a chord with me. And it's, it's in regards to, are we being made to do it right now?
Right.
Why not fight until it is said by the powers that be, now is the time? And then it caused me to think and.
Why not?
Yeah. But, but again, like I told you. Yeah. But, but again, like I told you, every, every one of us up here love the Lord and, and, and we, that Good Friday is important to us and they can't take it out of our heart. But again, I go back to what you said about how, how much are we willing to just let go without a fight? And then we go back to the prayer in the school. And so it kinda put me in a different place. And, and that has nothing to do with anybody other than with myself and who I am and what I stand for. And I just wanted that to be on the record.
Because my understanding after talking with many people that you haven't had an issue with it yet. No one's called and complained. No one said, take it off. No more than they, I guess evidently haven't told you to quit having a prayer here. So why not? Good Friday, comma, non-student, teacher, whatever wordage you want to use. But let Good Friday stand is my request, along with many others.
That's something to think about.
Very considerate.
Yeah, and put a comma.
We can take advice from the board attorney at some point. But we, we do have an undercurrent, an element. And now that is, I would say with what I've seen recently with the Sheriff's Department putting one nation under God on their vehicles and the complaint they had. And then the same institution going before the city, trying to stop them from providing opportunities for kids to swim in the summertime. I don't know if you followed all that, but there are elements that are pushing, looking for something.
True.
And I'm, and they're, and it's, there's no need, I mean, there's a need. I mean, you can stand in, in our hearts, like Sandy said, and we can do what we want to do. And, and I've talked with the superintendent and I know his heart, he's very, feels very strongly as well. And we've just got to pick our battles right now and realize what it's going to take. But we'll let the attorney look at it and advise us accordingly.
We'll research that.
Okay?
Yes, because again, there are the counties that still have Good Friday, comma, which may be a nice little tool to use. That says separate, separation of ideas, followed with non, non-day, I have all kinds of words. I've looked it all up. But why fold your hand until you have to? And like I said, just speaking for many, many people.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and next we have Casey Williams.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you'd state your address, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, my name is Casey Williams. I live at 129 North B Street, Palatka, Florida, 32177. Is that it?
Yep.
All right. So I prepared this. I didn't know I was supposed to bring copies. So you can have this if you want. So my concern with today is with some things that are going on in the school. So I'm literally just going to read it so that I could just kinda get it out there. Okay? So problems in the school that I'm concerned about is our lack of mentorship, period. Our teachers who do not have patience to deal with our children, yet they are provoking our children. And then when they respond negative, when the children respond negatively, they write them up or they give them a referral. And I would like to see a workshop for teachers. Jakita Williams is great with anger management of children. It may be great for teacher workshop as well. The quick reaction to deal with children that are presumed to have gang affiliation, yet no doubt there are gang members, I'm sure. But at what point are we going to publicize our definition of gang? These kids do not know what they can and cannot do. And even dressing like one or wearing the same colors is a problem. So if not being involved, quote unquote, not being involved in criminal activity is the only thing that separates these children, then how many children have we expelled unnecessarily? Quickly expelling children instead of finding a rehabilitation course of action. Solutions in our schools is merely a computer lab where children can sit and do work. But where's our mentorship in the school? Why are we not providing the troubled children with more resources than we are? We have children who use school as an outlet, yet I'm sure everyone knows that. When, but when they're acting out, we are labeling these children rather than referring them to proper people who can help them. And then of course, removing their outlet that they have. I see way too many kids getting bullied at school, yet when they fight back, they are considered gang related, even though children do have the right to defend themselves. Kids are failing. However, either teachers are too busy to notice or they see it and just don't do anything about it. Either, either way, there is an issue with children failing and teachers are not attempting to reach the parents, setting up meetings or even tutoring as a tutoring option. Teachers are not updating grades in the gradebook. Therefore, children who watch skyward and do not see a change in the grade merely think they're still failing. And that definitely needs, we definitely got to change that part. It seems like there are children being expelled to maintain the graduation rate. Even though they're in all actuality, kids in our community are failing. Claiming kids are gang affiliated in order to no longer have the responsibility to educate these children is definitely a problem. There are children that are not actually in gangs, yet are being labeled as such. We need, we need child advocates in our school system. And where there is no parent to advocate for a child, there should be an advocate. So parent, teacher meetings or so on and so forth. And they don't have a parent to show up. We shouldn't just leave our children alone to just fend for themselves. I have spoke with Randy Hedstrom in an attempt to add myself as a mentor to the school. I'm already prepared as I already have a relationship with the youth in our community, our community leaders, as well as the administration in the school. And there's plenty more that I would like to say, but that's going to be all for now. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we have no public hearing. And on the consent agenda, we are going to pull item E5 for discussion.
E5.
E5, and then we're going to remove item E7.
All right, we're going to pull and look at E5 and remove.
We're removing.
E7.
E7.
Did I say that correctly? Okay, okay. Okay, Ms. Gillyard, do you have anything you would like to pull?
No, ma'am. They, they took care of me this afternoon, answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Buckles?
I was fortunate enough to get to catch the superintendent prior to the meeting and I feel very confident about what I heard.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McGinnis?
I just had G18.
G18. And I just had concerns on E7 and that's been removed. So, um, we have G18 and E5?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus E5 and G18.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis to accept the consent agenda minus E5 and G18. And a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries four zero. On E5, Charlie is going to.
Sure, this was a contract that had a choice of law and venue provision of Arkansas. And we have requested that it be switched to Florida. And very quickly, Ms. McCool got an answer back from Apogee and they have agreed to that. So the version that the board chair would sign, if y'all approve it, would strike through the words Arkansas, put in Florida, and the Apogee folks will agree to that. So the motion, if you, if you want to approve it, would be to approve E5 with the change of, uh, choice of law and venue provision to be Florida.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve E5 with any changes of law that make it palatable to our attorney and, and meet the needs of our, our district.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. David Buckles and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item E5 with the changes that our board attorney recommended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero. Um, Mr. McGinnis?
The only thing I was asking Thomas, I guess, was on G18, the initial cost for the Tyler amend, Tyler Technologies amendment was big, but then the recurring. So the question I think I had was, um, the purpose of it was to log in students?
Sharon, can you miss spells here to, um, answer questions about that?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This, the software itself, it is, um, it, it's going to hopefully go on seventy buses. And what it's doing is, um, we get tablets and then each child gets, um, RFD cards. So actually what it's doing is, when the child gets on the bus, it, it tracks them, it reads them, they get on the bus. So every parent can go on the web and each parent can see their child. They know that they're on the bus. They know what time the bus comes, if the bus is late. It's called My Stop. That's just part of it. So we're paying for, uh, software to go on seventy buses and then ten buses is going to be spares. And that's just like the brackets. And, um, and these tablets are to be removed every day so that, um, well, actually they're removed every day from the buses. But it's also GPS that I'm sitting in my office or the person, my data analyst, we can see actually where the buses are. So, you know, we know where the buses are. If there's a problem, there's a wreck, we can, um, tell each parent that, you know, something is wrong with the bus. And it also has a turn by turn. So if a driver who's never been on a route, they take that tablet, it tells them each turn that they can go to, to a stop. So now it doesn't matter now if I don't know the route or not. It's, it's not an excuse. So, but really, it's really for, um, the safety of the children also. So that now the parents know they aren't staying in the rain, one if the bus is on time. We can just send out information from our department. I don't have to, um, use the, the telephone, district telephone now. So it's just a big, something I've been trying to get ever since I've become the director. It's just, just something that's going to be friendly. And it might stop a lot of calls coming into the, the, um, the department. So the parents also know their routes, they know the routes. It's just, it's supposed to be community friendly.
Question about cost, is that what you're?
So the initial, so the initial cost is, um, two hundred and one thousand. And that's, um, to, um, that's, um, training, that's training the mechanics to take care of the things that they can there. It's the hardware, the software, it's the GPS. And then, um, it's twenty-five thousand, um, each year after. That's the, that's the recurring fee. And that's to keep everything update, replacing tablets, replacing whatever needs to be replaced.
I remember, oh, excuse me. I was just going to say, sometimes back in the past, that has been one of our concerns, especially in West Putnam on those roads that are kinda not well lit. They're, you know, they're kinda dangerous and people have stepped up on buses. And this will give us that added.
Well, and she, and she needs to know where they are in relation to where we, the Sheriff's Department tracks sexual predators as well in relation to bus stops and all that stuff. It would just make, it's a no-brainer, you know?
And possibly be an avenue that we could just say, we could eliminate cell phones in school for that reason.
You, now see, you, you just about to get yourself in trouble with some parents about these cell phones. I know, I know.
Cell phones are the devil, so. I think it's a great system. If, if it's added security for our students and our drivers, I'm, I'm all for it. That's.
And I'm on the waiting list, so, um, it's, it might be next semester when we actually have it enforced. But, um, but hopefully.
Some other districts, I know you reached out to see, hey, I know this thing.
And we have virtual trains as our routing and planning already. So, um, it's just easier just to stick with them and it's all under one umbrella.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Sharon.
Did you, did you see the video that Ricky Bibby, local pastor, had put on about the car passing the school bus on the yellow line? And he took a, had it on his dash cam, going to Crescent City. It was enough to just send, I, I can't, I know I speak for everybody up here. We, we are just so thankful that you and your staff try to work with law enforcement to keep our children safe. It's a never-ending job.
We're thinking about two through the summer, so that's just an added bonus.
And thank you.
With the meals and everything alike, right?
Thank you, Sharon, for what you do. You know, let us know, I know you will through the superintendent or Thomas will, if you need something.
Yes, sir.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Sharon.
I make a motion that we.
You take care of yourself.
That we approve item G18.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bud McGinnis and a second by Ms. Sandra Gillyard to accept item G18. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries four zero. We have no emergency items, no unfinished business, no new business. So we'll move to the reports by the board members. Ms. Gillyard, would you like to go first?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to commend, congratulate and say thank you all in one breath to the following people that are retiring. Ms. Bernice Ryan, Michelle Fudo, okay? Melanie Driver, Gail McCoy, Deborah Robbins, Deborah Yeoman, Annette Blocker, Julie Kaufman, Donna Johnson and Donella Monroe. I had the pleasure of working with Donella out at Oak Willa some years ago. And, and we just thank them for their services to the students in Putnam County, giving tirelessly of themselves. Also, just want, can't say enough about STEM. Just can't say enough about it. And we are the better for it and our students are the better for it. And, um, a question was asked after, after all of this, heard all of these presentations. The Evans Young Lady, the Asbury Young Lady, Jeremiah Cook, a relative. All of these great things and these young people coming up being rewarded and recognized for the great things that they're doing. Yes, they are athletes, but they're student athletes as well. And so we appreciate that. Was at a great banquet on last night at the top scholars, wherein it used to be fifty, a hundred years ago. And, and you can't stop at fifty now. All the students are excelling and that's what we want. But a question was asked in a famous book that says, could any good thing come out of Nazareth? Well, in our case, I would rephrase it and say, can any good thing come out of Putnam County? You saw it here, folks.
You came.
It is. They are awesome. And, and, and our hats off to our teachers, our administrators, our district staff for the visions you all have. And this other great book, same great book says, without a vision, people perish. And so we thank you for all that you do. And I'm not blowing smoke. I don't believe in that when I'm talking about the word. But you're doing an awesome job and people would be proud to move here. And I just wish I had some real estate because folk are going to be knocking down our doors trying to get in Putnam County. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
They already are knocking down.
Thank you, Ms. Gillyard. Mr. Buckles?
I'd like to respond briefly to the parent that came up and had the questions. And I'd like to, just a little bit, tell you that it, on, on things that are gang related or if anything that, that is considered to be a disruption toward the orderly process of a school, whether it's a tee shirt, a cap, a bandana, an insignia, anything that school officials find that create or contribute to a disruption and, and particularly what's called the disorderly process of school, can be actionable. And, and I don't know if somebody had explained that to you or not, but I just wanted to mention that. I, I know a lot of times parents don't always understand exactly the cards they're being dealt and what's going on. But, uh, our attorney will keep us in line if, if we, if someone strays. But, uh, policies are, are real clear and, and they are continually updated statewide. We have a group that updates our board policies to, to re, to, to reflect any changes in Florida statute in governing school laws. After that, graduation is coming and it's at hand. And I can't thank superintendent enough for getting with law enforcement and trying to, you know. You know, we've seen an uptick in accidents on our highways, but law enforcement has been really working to try to show their presence and diminish the speeding and reckless behavior. Although, when I saw the thing, the video of the truck passing the school bus in South Putnam, it just made me wanna, you know...
Get the tag.
Get 'em, yeah. So, anyway, I can't say enough about that. Just, I'm sure our principals and those that are working with our graduating students are trying to make sure they stay conscious through the ceremony and the following days, because it's such a joyous time. And then, you know, it's also a very dangerous time when they're on the road and they're not thinking. And we have children from other counties as well passing through Putnam, going to the beach or coming from the beach. And it's just one of those things, I never... I never have enjoyed that part of the job that you all have seen from time to time. But beyond that, I just, you know, can't thank our employees enough. They put up with a lot, and our programs and everything, the STEM. It's just fascinating to see where we've gone with that and some of the projects that we're seeing with the drones, and it's phenomenal. It's... The education is here, if you want to avail yourself of it. All you gotta do is try. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mr. McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mr. McGinnis?
Okay. Well, I just want to congratulate all the students. Been to a lot of awards and presentations, sports banquets and the like, and just an excellent display of what kind of students that we're putting out, I mean, that we are putting out into the world, that we want to come back to Putnam County. And our teachers are amazing. For last week, the portrait of a graduate, I just still was overwhelmed with... I couldn't get off of social media. It was just too much to watch all the facets, from the community, to the student, to the parents, and then the teachers all involved. And I just can't give enough credit to that group there that thought of that. And I won't be at the baccalaureate tonight at IJSHS, because my grandson is graduating from Pedro. But I wish them well, and congratulations, graduates.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. I just have a few things. I don't think we've met since my husband and I had the chance to go see Hello Dolly. That was amazing. And every time I go to a performance, I'm just amazed at the talent that we have. And Mr. Pignato, whom I've never met personally, must be just amazing. The Top Scholars banquet was... Or awards was really... It was long, but it was very entertaining and just enlightening. Our kids do some amazing things. I did pay attention to quite a few of the biographies, and there are quite a few teachers, or aspiring teachers in that group of students. So hopefully they'll come back home after their college. I did go to... We've been to a lot of awards, banquets. Last night's baseball softball banquet was amazing. I did really like how most, every coach emphasized the academic as much as the athletic performance. I thought that was really neat last night. One, I went to a top eighth-grade awards at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. And there was a student, Matt Lyden, Max Lyden, who is an eighth-grader at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. And the Kiwanis Club recognized him for making all As in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, great job by not only him, but his parents and his teachers for encouraging him. Last Friday night, we had the Spring Jamboree at Crescent City Junior/Senior High School. Palaka Hot... Well, Palaka Junior/Senior High School and Interlochen Junior/Senior High School were there. So, you know, I love Friday night football, and I wish the weather had cooperated a little bit better than it did. But I think it was a... It was a great night. I got to spend it in the concession stand, which is always extremely fun. And... But I do think that coaches can use something like a Spring Jamboree, whether you win or you lose, as a motivational thing through a hot summer. So I'm glad that we had the jamboree, and I'm especially glad that it was all three schools from our county participating. Crescent City's baccalaureate is tomorrow night at South Putnam Church. And next week, I look forward to all the graduations. It's such a great time of the year, and celebrating students and their parents, their families, their teachers, their custodians, their bus drivers, the lunch ladies, everybody that has a part in it. And that's all for me. So, Mr. Charlie Douglas, I was gonna say Lex, but he's not here.
Thank you, board. It's a pleasure to be with you again. And I would like to formally introduce Carol Simpson, who just recently joined our firm. She is from Tallahassee and worked 21 years in the Attorney General's office. And brings with her a tremendous amount of experience, and we're so fortunate to have her wisdom and expertise as part of our team in Administrative Law Division. We're honored to be able to represent other governmental entities in addition to the Putnam County School Board. And so Carol brings so much knowledge and experience with that. And she's already up to speed on quite a few of the legal matters that are going on in the legal department of the school board, and will continue to be more. And we have some additional research to do, rising out of today's meeting, so we'll be on that. And if you have any other questions, of course, we're always here.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Dr. Searcy?
Yeah, welcome, young lady. New board attorney, yeah.
Yes.
I guess next meeting, you'll be up here, right? Yeah. Yeah, we'll see.
Don't be shy. Don't be bashful either.
First of all, I just want to say that the Portrait of a Graduate Week was phenomenal. We had each school, you know, put out different things on social media, and it was really very successful. And actually, we had a principal's meeting, and we actually had each principal share in the principal's meeting what they did for that. So it was good collaboration, and, you know, I thought it really lends itself to what we're trying to do with our graduates now, is prepare them for post-secondary. And actually, in my graduation comments at each ceremony, I'll actually be touching on Portrait of a Graduate, and will be highlighting different graduates who really exemplify one of those six areas. So it should be very interesting. We're also gonna be at our graduation ceremonies recognizing our products of Putnam. And that is our annual way of celebrating those who come back and serve in our... Or maybe not leave in the first place, who serve in our district or our county, who have graduated from the Putnam County School. We're also gonna be having computer science training for teachers at CLO in June. That's our second annual training. And that should... We have teachers, I believe, coming in from different districts. So again, going back to our STEM, Putnam County is leading... I don't want to say the state, but we're leading this area in STEM. And we're having teachers coming from Duval County and other counties, and from other countries. So I think we definitely are developing a huge following there. And it's really about the K-12 aspect of STEM. We just don't offer classes in high school. We actually build that capacity in elementary school. And again, with our STEM van, you know, it's kinda costly to have all the STEM teaching materials in all of the schools that they really need. So the STEM van really rotates to those elementary schools, and those kids do a lot of activities. But again, we're building that interest, so when they do get into junior/senior high, then they... Actually, when they get in sixth grade, they actually take a required elective.
Sorry, could you say that again?
Sorry.
Required elective.
Yeah, Siri, she's great. So in junior/senior high school, they actually start on a career path for STEM. So I think we have a real, you know, strategic way of exposing students to our STEM in Putnam County. The last thing I want to mention is, the last two weeks, we have actually... Our staff has been going to different schools and talking to different faculties. Myself, Ashley McCool, Rhonda Odom, Thomas Boeing, and the directors over those specific schools have been in those schools, and we've met almost with every faculty. We have a couple to go. And our purpose is, we are talking about our bond referendum. And again, we cannot campaign, but we can offer information. So we are trying to really expose our internal stakeholders, our employees, if you will, about the bond referendum and what that is. Because I know during the summer, a lot of people will be talking to our employees and asking them questions about that. So we want to make sure they are informed first. And then, our goal is, this summer is to get out, and Ashley is really gonna be on the warpath... Not warpath, but on the path to sharing information to different groups around the county, whether that's churches, or civic groups, or whatever that might be. And if you know of any groups that may want to hear more about the bond referendum and about a revitalization plan. And we actually have put together... Ashley's department has put together like a nine-minute video that really puts together all that information. And then we stand by and, you know, provide questions and answers. Ashley, in the next few days, is gonna be putting that video on our website along with some frequently asked questions about, you know, the bond, the building of new schools, why this school and this particular phase, and so on. She'll be putting that on our website. But more importantly, we want to get in front of people. So if you'll, you know, any of you have information that Ashley can have as far as presentations, please get with her. And again, our intent is just to provide information. Now, we're gonna be doing this at the district office this week, as well as at CLO this week. And our goal is, I just talked to Ashley, we'd like to do a board presentation at the July meeting with you. And again, we'll provide information whenever you ask for it, but in a formal sense, provide that information to the board at our July meeting. So with that, that's our plan, and we're sticking with it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything to add? This meeting's adjourned.